Do you call roll, please?
Vice Mayor Von Figlio.
Here.
Commissioner Cause.
Here.
Commissioner McGruder.
Here.
Mayor Pugh.
Here.
And then on the Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman Gray.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Kozinski.
Here.
Member Marsh.
Here.
And that is all. Please let the record show that Commissioner Ascov is absent with notice.
Okay. All right, Sam, for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's get right into it here. See the workshop discussion items, and I guess the first one, we're gonna start off with Saturday construction hours. It's been brought to the attention that Saturday construction hours should be something we should look at in regards to curtailing or eliminating. So, anybody like to begin with any thoughts on that? All right, I'll begin. I think that the...
Okay.
I believe that the Saturday construction hours should be limited to a little later start, like eight, and then be done by at least by two on a Saturday. Don, Village Goff, what are their Saturday construction hours?
Eight to four.
Eight to four?
Eight to four. Nobody...
But they close, don't they, close everything down outside for a certain amount of time, too?
Yes. Most everybody in the area starts at eight, some start at eight-thirty, but very few go past four o'clock, four-thirty, because people wanna have time on Saturdays to get outdoors and do their barbecuing.
Isn't it, it's not necessarily just a problem with construction, it's noise, right? Like, I know in my neighborhood, which I'll bring up at the town commission meeting, the leaf blowers on Saturday, if somebody's laying carpet in a house, does the town, does the neighborhood care? No, they care if somebody's got one of those bullet guns shooting studs.
Steel guns, yeah.
Yeah. So, two o'clock sounds like it's kind of towards the issue. But I know that in my particular case, in my neighborhood, people tend to be out and about afternoon time. So, I would not like to see a lot of noise, construction noise afternoon time, but I don't care if somebody's laying carpet.
Yeah, and what's the problem we're trying to address? Are we trying to address the noise?
Quality of life issue.
I mean, that's the noise, essentially, parking. People having trouble parking because construction crews are bringing their cars.
I think it's mainly the noise.
It's noise, okay. So, we can address the problem by limiting time for outside activities, limiting the noise, allowing them to do stuff inside that is not gonna cause a serious noise problem, right?
Do exterior versus interior hours have two different timeframes if you wanted to do it that way?
Well, I think if you're gonna regulate any kind of industry, I think you should regulate that industry as a whole. If it's gonna be construction, it's gonna be construction whether inside or outside, because you're still going back and forth. And say, you're building a kitchen in the outside, you have a saw outside to cut all the materials what you're putting in inside. So, how would you differentiate? You can have the police department, where is he? He's sitting way back there? You hiding back there? You know, the police department's gonna have to differentiate themselves between what's inside, what's outside, what's construction, what's remodeling. So, rather, do you think that'd be a problem?
Yes. I would ask that everyone read Section 34-83, and not just the title. That particular ordinance does deal with construction noise. It does not deal with a prohibition on construction activities. I believe you were provided 34-8, which is a prohibition on construction activities for commercial construction-style activities on Sundays and legal holidays. You may want to look at 34-8 to model something for Saturday, if that's your desire. It is difficult for us. We can respond on a complaint basis for noise, if that's your desire from a construction site. Internal or external construction may or may not create noise that travels past the property line, as is addressed in 34-83. And a police officer's peace can't be disturbed, so we would need a complaint to act on these things. I've heard all different comment on why and how we would address it. I would ask that if the commission's desire is to have no commercial construction activity for a certain period of time, that we definitively state that. That's easily enforced and it's easily understood. If it is solely noise, then I would ask you to just increase the penalties and the enforcement of 34-83. You have any questions?
Well, thank you.
Do you have public comment on each section, or...?
Yeah, but only one time, you better save it up.
I mean, one time per subject.
I, Terry Brown, Harbor Drive South, I agree with Steve Cause. The problem is noise with leaf blowers and mowers. And I think that you ought to look at a long-term plan, which the town of Palm Beach, we're not on Palm Beach, everybody says that, but there are companies now selling battery-operated blowers and tree trimming equipment. The guy that I use has a battery-operated made by Steel Company, it makes no noise at all. So, I think this issue of noise is really the thing that we need to be looking at, not necessarily construction. Because if you're inside a house working sheet rock or whatever, it might not be making too much noise for your neighbors. But really, the noise issue on Saturday is really a big problem. So, you have to look at the whole noise ordinance for the equipment they're using for lawn service every day of the week. And I believe you can do it, other towns are doing it. It just takes backbone to deal with these vendors. They're all registered when they come into town, right? There you go.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Well, they're not registered anymore, they don't have to have a little... So, anyone can come in and work?
We got preempted, if I remember correctly, did you not?
Yes, sure, Polly. Isn't Barbara the Planning and Zoning? Why don't you come sit up over here? An alternate.
Hi.
Hello, Polly.
Polly Cho at 35 Percy Drive. As a person who has built and annoyed all our neighbors at one time or another, the only thing I would say about construction hours on Saturday is I don't see a problem in shortening them up from six o'clock. But I would try and give the crews an eight-hour work time. Because I think when you start going shorter than that, your GC is gonna have trouble trying to keep those crews and allow them to get their hours in for their pay. So, I just consider that.
Thank you.
Anybody from the Planning and Zoning?
Yeah, if I understand it, the chief brought up the ordinance as it is effective on Sunday, which applies to residents as well as anyone else. And it would seem to me that those rules might be adapted to Saturday when construction is allowed. I like that idea of an eight-hour workday, because that is viable if you're paying a construction crew. The part that Terry brought up regarding battery-powered leaf blowers, that might be taking it a little far in my estimation beyond what we're talking about, which is just Saturday work by professionals. You know, if the town wants battery-powered leaf blowers, then so be it. But it doesn't seem practical to me.
Thanks, Steve.
Is there anybody here who's a builder, a developer? So, what would be the economic impact to the owner if you did cut back the Saturday construction hours to, let's say, eight to one, let's compromise at one? So, they'd lose three hours, well, they'd lose five hours, I guess.
I don't think in a residential area or residential construction it would be that much of an impact. Maybe commercial where speed is of the essence sometimes, but residential construction, I would say it may be a little bit different. And I would be hard-pressed to say that there would be a big impact. There'd be an impact certainly, but maybe not a big impact on the crew and the builder in a residential setting.
Thanks.
If I could, I think when we talk about builders' contracts as developers, remember that most contracts are written for five workdays. Everything's a five-workday. Saturday is a bonus day. I think personally, eight to two is a good period. Because at two o'clock, they'll stop, they'll break down their equipment, so they won't be off the site till maybe three. If they get to four, they're gonna be five, so I think that makes sense. It's a bonus day, yeah, I respect the eight-hour workday, but, you know, contractors can get in a half-day or three-quarter day, I think are glad to do it. But remember, most contracts are five working days per week.
Did not know that.
Saturday's a bonus.
Yeah, Saturday's always an extra day to get things done, kind of a cleanup day. So, what do you want, so what's the general consensus? For hours, reduce the hours till, from eight till two, say, or eight till four? I mean, limiting Saturday altogether, I wouldn't say is a viable option at all.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea either. Maybe, how about looking at reducing the decibels allowed to on Saturday?
We already have that in the noise ordinance.
Puts the chief in an awkward spot. I'm a fan of, after what Mark just said, of going to one o'clock, because they're gonna be breaking down till two o'clock. And they still get paid for that?
Well, no, when you say one o'clock done, that's done. You're just gonna be off the site at that time, not cleaning up. Hours are from till 6:00 PM, that means you need to be off the site at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Not sitting there cleaning up till seven or eight o'clock at night.
So, does it take an hour to stop?
Well, you have to plan on taking, whatever it takes you to stop, you need to be literally off at 6:00 PM, you need to be off the property at 6:00 PM.
So, if you're building a pool, you have a tractor digging the hole and grinding through the coral, and you have to be off the site by two, what time are you gonna shut down?
Up by two, and be out by 12:00 o'clock, you're starting to clean everything up, sweep the street and everything out, yeah.
Wow.
You have to. Now, if there's an instance where you're pouring concrete, where there's a time-sensitive issue, you wouldn't plan that on a Saturday anyway. If you did, that's only, that's your problem.
Yeah, but generally contractors plan this stuff out, don't they? I mean, this day one, we do this, day two, we do this, and they kind of plan, you know, for a rain day, too, right? And they gotta anticipate that, so like, you know, a few days ahead of time, they know, they have a pretty good idea what they're gonna do on a Saturday, right?
Pretty much. Or if you're doing anything, just like I said.
If they know their hours, you know, they can say, "We can't do this, so here's how we have to plan around Saturday."
And I have one last question, which I guess may be the attorney. If we say you have to be off the construction site by two o'clock, because at the town meeting, I'm gonna bring up this leaf blower issue, I don't want that to allow leaf blowers to go to two. Because the average person who's doing a lunch barbecue is probably out at their pool by one.
Well, I mean, right now, let's say that we do make this change and you go eight to two. There's a couple of things. First of all, one of the things is that, you know, I would suggest that we modify our code a little bit to clarify that even during the weekday, construction stops at 6:00 PM. Because right now, a lot of the verbiage that you have in here is based on noise, not actual construction stoppage. So, I think we probably need to clarify that, kind of like what we're clarifying on Saturday hours from eight to two, where no construction after that point. Now, we're talking about construction, I mean, commercial construction, too. So, if you're a homeowner, this is not going to impact you as long as you do not run afoul of other ordinances in our code, such as the noise ordinance. So, the noise ordinance will always be in place. So, if you're a homeowner out there, you know, with your own leaf blower, you know, doing this, then you're allowed to do it as long as you do not run afoul of the decibel level after that certain period of time, which I think, Chief, is that 6:00 PM norm, or I guess 6:00 PM during the day, or during the week?
There are prohibitions against noise between 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday has specific and narrowly defined hours of 11 to 12:00.
Okay, and it's also my understanding, too, now, this, what we're doing here, this is really not going to impact the service industry, such as landscapers and people like that. If they aren't doing construction, if they're just doing maintenance, this will really have no bearing at all on them.
That's what I want.
Right, it won't.
If we have one ordinance that says you're off the construction site by two, but at the town meeting, we say we don't want the service personnel making this kind of noise afternoon, are we setting ourselves up for legal conflict?
Well, I mean, we haven't said that yet, you know, right now. I don't think so, because we're talking about construction. And I think construction, the way that it's been presented here, too, there's a lot of different variations on construction. It's not just the noise, it's the cars, it's the traffic, it's all those different things there. Now, you know, I, once again, since this is not just a noise-based thing, I think we would be okay if we address that separately. But it, I just want to be clear, it's not going to impact or have any bearing on, you know, on landscapers, so.
Ken?
Thank you. Ken Khalil, 86 Island Drive South. I think the town attorney recognized the distinction between the problem and the code, between the time of hours versus noise, so we do have to clean that up. I am a proponent of limiting the time of construction on Saturday. Being cognizant of the fact that as a homeowner, there are gonna be circumstances, since you're working, assuming you're working five days during the week, that there are things that have to go on on Saturday, that you might have to have work done on Saturday. So, how you balance that? I think the biggest issue that you're dealing with with construction on a Saturday is not the isolated incident, it's not the neighbor that needs to fix something, it's not that. It's really the developer or the builder that every Saturday morning, come eight o'clock, it's pound, 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 all day long until six o'clock. Or conversely, as some of my neighbors have described to me, they can't even sit in their backyard because they're, you know, if they're sunbathing or whatever the case may be, there's issues across the water or in the backyard or whatever the case, you know, things of that nature. So, I think there can be a distinction between the type of construction going on. And I think there is a distinction between emergency repairs and things of that nature. And I think we have to be cognizant of the isolated construction versus the new construction. And I think Mr. Marsh is correct. Most developers and most contracts are written for a five-day workweek, and that sixth day is a bonus day. So, you do have some leeway with respect to that. And a lot of municipalities, there are time periods where you can't even build, period, during the time of the year. And I know Mr. Marsh and Mr. Gray and Jeff knows that. So, I mean, to have some limitation makes sense. To preserve the quality of life that you have for your homeowners makes sense. How you balance that and being cognizant of the various issues that might arise, that's what's important in a workshop. That's what's important to discuss, in my view. And to be able to differentiate and allow code enforcement or the chief to have a clear message and a clear understanding of what you're trying to achieve in that objective. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may also just, I guess, ask for direction, too, from you all. In a lot of other codes, there are provisions where, say, the town manager has the authority to override this. You know, if somebody comes to them and presents special circumstances, and the way that I've seen most of this come up is like a concrete pour, where they have to do it, you know, they have to get in there earlier to do it. It's gonna be a one-time thing, and where they're, either they get in early or they think they're going late or something like that.
We just did that on the seawall, right there on, with the seawall on the beach, just did that on, it is Saturday hours. So, I mean, yeah, I can understand.
We had that in our code already.
Yeah, we had, it's already in there.
And I think I read...
Plus, we also do it as a commissioning-based thing as well, so.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that we have some provision in there for that.
I believe in here, it says something about if you have an emergency, you get a three-day grace period to repair something.
Yes.
But I agree with what Brian's saying, we should just go revisit the whole thing, decide the time, and then go revisit the ordinance to make sure it's accomplishing what we're sitting here discussing.
Well, okay, but, I mean, you just want to make sure the differentiation is there between noise, service, or new construction. And the new construction is really what, it seems, what the whole crux of the matter is here. So, I guess the consensus would be to look into shortening the hours from eight till...
I think two.
One, two o'clock?
I'd go for one.
Okay, and then also cleaning up the part in the code where starting time is certain time and then ending time is ending time, which means you literally have to be off property at that exact time.
I can clarify that, too, and I don't know if the chief has any comments on this or not, but, you know, if we say starting time for construction is, let's say, during normal, you know, Monday through Friday, eight to six, which means that, you know, workers are not able to, okay, let's unload our stuff, let's do all of this stuff, let's open the doors and all of that, all of those things. I guess they can arrive on the site, but, you know, they physically can't do anything until eight o'clock, and then once eight o'clock comes, then they can start unloading, they can start doing things. But no prep work, I guess, is the easiest way to describe it.
Well, I know the police department has a discretion, they do that now. They, you know, allow folks be, pull up on the job, and if they're quiet and they're opening the gates, you're right. But my biggest concern is the ending time. Because it always seems that the construction guys seem to milk it for another hour, especially in the summertime, because you've got some more daylight. So, that's the only thing, I would make sure that that's very specific in our code.
Just a comment of clarification. As I understand the chief, our noise ordinance is good just the way it is. Secondly, we're only talking about changing the ordinance as it relates to construction contractors and not lawn maintenance people or homeowners.
That's correct.
Correct.
Good, okay. And I'm good with limiting the hours, therefore, from eight to one or even two. Give Mark the benefit of the doubt here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have all consensus on that, we'll look into changing that. And that means you're increasing your budget amount again, next time budget?
Yeah. And what I will do, what I would also, I guess...
It can't work on Saturdays.
It can't work on Saturdays.
Yeah, yeah. Mention to the commission here, even though the changes on this particular ordinance are not in the land development code, I think it would still be a good idea to have this run by the P&amp;Z board before it comes back to you. So, if there's, if you all are okay with that, that's what I plan on doing, as well as have it go to them first for their review, and then it'll come to you, if that's okay.
I'd appreciate it.
That's fine. All right, great.
Need a motion to have Brian go forward with this, or...
No, I think we have direction, I think staff has direction, too.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to number two, demolition code vibration issues. Now, this came up because of some of the vibrating of installing pilings and also vibrators for slabs are doing to older, the older homes that are next to the newer homes that are being built, I imagine. Is this why this came up?
And one of the residents came forward because he used a wrecking ball on...
Does P&amp;Z have any suggestions here?
I mean, right now, in our code, I mean, you're not, anything you do on your property is not to damage your neighbor's property, is that, that's already written in our code?
Yeah, but I think the problem with the gentleman that was here, the wrecking ball came down next to his property, then when he brought the contractor over to show him his cracked patio and his cracked seawall, the contractor said, "That was there before, prove it, prove it wasn't." So, I mean, it puts the neighbor in an awkward position, and it also puts the contractor in an awkward position.
I mean, at this stage, and I think the chief could probably possibly add to this on the enforcement part, but, you know, there are other codes out there where they have some language in there that talk about the way that construction will be performed, that there are certain standards, you know, so as not to be injurious or offensive to the occupants of adjacent premises by reason of emission of creation of noise, vibration, smoke, dust, or other particulate matter, blah, blah, blah. And it continues on. Now, I don't think we have, I'm not, I don't think we have something like that in particular, that specific in our code. I guess part of the question is, do you want, you know, by, if the town adopts something like this, then a homeowner would be able to come to the town, to, whether it's the building official or the chief or a code, you know, code enforcement person, and say, "Look, here's what they're doing on my adjacent property. You can stand on my property, in my house, in my kitchen here, and feel the vibration." And so, then the code officer could go over to that, the other property there and go, "Okay, look, you're in violation of this section of the code. I'm going to write you a citation, or we're gonna start code enforcement processing, you know, processes against you now." If you were to adopt something like that, you know, I think that would kind of be the process to be followed. Now, I guess also, if you were to adopt something like that, when somebody comes in for a building permit, then it could be pointed out to them that, "Look, there is no adjacent, you know, we do not allow vibration to go onto adjacent properties, so you need to show me how you're going to, say, demolish, or how you're going to put these piling in, you know, without creating that issue." And I don't know what issues, if any, that would create, I'm not sure, because I'm not in the construction industry. I just kind of want to, you know, kind of put that out there for your consideration, so.
Well, that's a tough one, because you don't want to be, you don't want to be doing something that's also killing the construction industry in our own town. Because, I mean, let's face it, some of these older houses are much older, and if you're building a house that's three feet above it and you're vibrating that ground, you're going to, there's going to be some issue, and you don't plan on destroying a neighbor's house. But who would have, who would be due diligence with the person, you know what I'm saying, is that who, well, like...
It seemed to me that the issue would be a liability issue. Maybe if we require some sort of notice before the use of a wrecking ball to the adjacent neighbors, so they can take their pictures of the inside of the house before the wrecking starts. And if there's an issue as to what damage it caused, they, you know, they had notice and they could document what the interior looked like and show what it looked like afterwards. And I can't think of anything else unless there's an alternative to using a wrecking ball or some sort of, you know, vibration-causing device to do the construction.
Well, I mean, in other places, and I think Mark could chime in on this, you know, there's other places out there that ban vibratory compaction, because people know what that does to adjacent properties. And of course, now, as far as like putting in piling or sheet piling, things like that, I'm not sure if there's one method that's preferred over the other. If you want to try to regulate that, that would be my only other, you know, I guess, opinion on that. And, but I don't know if there is one method that's better than the other one, so.
I think liability is the key word. I think the liability or the responsibility is on the owner of that property that's performing whatever activity, wrecking balls, piling. And I think the responsibility should be, if there's a concern from the building department, I think they can give them an alert and say, "Hey, this is very close to the neighbor," or "It's very susceptible." But the company performing the work and the contractor should be monitoring pre and post, you know, adjacent properties. That's what's normally done, to have some records, so you don't get into this he-said, she-said situation. That's how I've seen it done. The onus is on the property owner. I don't want to bring Ken back up here, but he may challenge me. But it's whoever is doing the improvement or the modification is the one that's liable for any damage. And it's there, it's there in their best interest to do a pre and post-evaluation of any adjacent problem. I don't think the town can get into this because it's an open-ended, you know, this crack was here before and now it's, you know, or it wasn't here before and now it's here. I think the forensics that can be done, there are agencies out there that can monitor this, you know, the vibration.
I mean, the problem you're gonna have with that, though, is that generally speaking... I mean, the problem you're going to have with that, though, is that generally speaking, unless it's a foundational or issue, the cost of getting the expert to say, this was not preexisting, is going to outweigh the cost of pursuing it. So is there any way we can, we can, you know, sort of make a presumption against the contractor homeowner? If they don't give some sort of notice and before, and to the neighbors and check afterwards, that it's their responsibility as opposed to the, the adjacent homeowner's responsibility?
Well, I mean, I...
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I guess what we could have, and I don't know, I'd probably be, this is more of a, and I guess I'm looking at Jamie, this is more of a, of a staff type thing, where it's, it would be on a checklist, where, okay, before we give you a permit for demolition or any type of matter that's, that, you know, whether it's compaction or driving piling or, or doing anything like that, you have to give us notice that, or you have to give us documentation that you have notified the surrounding neighbors and that they have taken pictures or that they have allowed you, you know, that, that you have done this, that you have notified them before we will issue the permit. Now, I guess we, you know, we could put that in our, you know, I guess, in the, the things that we follow, where, okay, we will not issue a demo permit until this is done, but, you know, that's just going to be another little step there that, that we would, that staff would have to make sure that they follow, if, if that's what you wanted.
May I suggest that...
I think we're getting way too...
This appears to be a rather isolated incident and not a reoccurring problem. And therefore, if that is the case, let's not overreact to a random event. Because it would seem to me that there are a lot of variables involved with respect to compaction. And therefore, it would take a lot of study to differentiate one from the other, and I'm not sure that's necessary, given the fact that we're talking about a, a random event. So my suggestion is, let's leave it the way it is. If it becomes a reoccurring problem, okay, we can react then, but not today. Thank you.
Well, but we have a whole number of new permitting applied for here, especially as a result of the coming out of the recession, and it may become a recurring problem in the near future that we probably should address. How many, how, how far up are we on permitting for this year? Is it, we got a lot of permits for new construction?
Yeah, excuse me, we do have a lot of activity in that department to address what you're talking about, Mr. Bonfigio, and piggyback on the attorney's comments. We could certainly notify adjacent property owners that this is going on, but I'm concerned if it's not codified, if it's not a specific step, then you could still run into a mess where somebody says, well, I didn't get that notice, or I didn't know I had to give it.
Yeah, I mean, what's wrong with saying contractor, if you're doing compacting, you got to go to the, you know, neighbors within 300 yards, knock on their door, saying it's, it's starting, and if you want to avoid liability, take pictures. And if you don't do that, you know, presumption shifts to you, that it's your fault, and you got to prove it's not your fault. What's wrong with that? That's not that complicated.
What presumption that it's...
A presumption that the compacting caused the damage that the homeowner is complaining about.
Well...
And, and...
You mean with, without proof?
Well, without them going around and to each homeowner and checking. Yeah, so, in other words, if they don't go to each homeowner and knock on the door and take a picture of the interior, I mean, it's easy to do, you can take a videography, and it takes you 10 minutes to go through the house, and you save it for each house, and there's going to be, what, 10 houses? It adds maybe an hour or two to your time, and if you don't do that, and there is damage to the adjacent homeowner as a result of compacting, or the homeowner claims that, it is presumed that that damage is caused by the compacting. And, you know, that relieves the homeowner, the adjacent homeowner, of the burden of establishing it was the compacting, and it shifts the burden to the contractor to prove it wasn't. That's all. It's not, I don't think it's that complicated.
My only suggestion, I just don't think the town should be getting involved. I think the building department, if they have a concern that there's an adjacency problem or a soil problem, could just recommend an in writing that the contractor or the owner, prior to performing any work, you know, should take steps to evaluate the existing conditions of it.
Well, isn't that already on our permits? When we do, we pull our permits, and basically you have to establish the existing conditions, make sure they're suitable for what you're rebuilding. I mean, that's already on a...
Any further than that, you're getting into a...
And how many, and exactly to Jerry's point, how many, we, how many of these instances are we talking about?
Well, if I may, bring back the, the homeowner that came in to complain about the, was because the house next to him, it wasn't so much a compacting issue, it had to do with the breaking up of the foundation of the house that was previously there. And the foundation was there, and they used a wrecking ball to come down and break up that concrete foundation, and that apparently is what caused his problem, as opposed to, I think, what you said, something about at the meeting, what if they used a jackhammer? If it, it takes them longer, it's probably more expensive, but it doesn't result in the vibration that would cause by this huge wrecking ball dropping down on a piece of concrete, on his concrete slab. So I don't know if it has to do with the regular compacting of soil, you know, in construction, in the building, in the construction process. This had to do with the demolition using this huge wrecking ball. That's what I understand.
But I think what P and Z is pointing out is that vibrations from a wrecking ball might equate to the vibrations from a compacting. So you, you know, who knows physics?
Well, we're all going, we're all going in the same direction. Whatever happened, working at that site damaged somebody else's property. So to Mark's point too, I mean, it is, you have liability insurance, contractors have liability insurance, they should be culpable for any damage, and then the town really, what, what could the town do ordinance wise? You know, we're, how are we going to get, we're going to stuck, stick down in the middle of it?
There's nothing you can do. It's a civil matter between the two property owners. If there's damage that hasn't hurt, we always, whenever anybody pulls a demolition permit, first thing we tell them is to get out there and videotape or get some kind of photographic record of every parcel around them, in case something like this comes up. But for us to be involved, for the, for the town, no, it's a civil matter. It's between the two property owners.
Okay.
It's a he said, she said. This guy claims that there's a major crack, the contractor says no, the contractor, you know, wasn't, wasn't there, you know, you get, you know, you have to prove it. Here again, let them take it to civil court, that's why they pay insurance.
Anything else? I think that says it all. All right, let's move on. Number three, floor area ratio. How did that get in there?
I got a, yeah, why? Why are we doing this again?
Just for our own edification, nobody else is in, everybody else will throw that in there.
Didn't we just have an election where, you know, the two people ran, running on the housing floor ratio, lost decisively?
This is a workshop, Jim, right?
Okay.
No official vote, right?
Yeah.
All right, so who wants to start? Jerry?
Yes, may I suggest that this is a quality of life issue. And I, by no means want to say that bigger is better, but let's recognize that more and more younger families are moving into town. They're, they're moving from the country club communities to coastal area. And younger families mean the need for more sports, storage space, getting cars off the driveways and maybe into a larger garage, a three car garage. And I, I think we can enhance the quality of life by very carefully modifying our floor area ratio code and not, you know, we talked about 50% credit for garage area. So that seems to be a very reasonable thing. And if you'll recall, the planning commission had voted to recommend to the commission that that be done, and it was not done. Unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting to, to advocate that it be done. But again, I, just to repeat, I'm sorry to repeat, but this is a quality of life issue. It's a, a matter of accommodating people with storage, places for the kids' third car. And I think that this would be a very positive move for us as a, as a community. Thank you.
Yeah, when the floor area ratio came up, I was an alternate, but I was privileged to vote on it. And I looked at various things. We talked about setbacks being maintained, which they were. No changes or exemptions for garage locations, that was upheld. We're talking about a 4% increase in the size of a home. Certain things were brought up, like the vocalization of our town, and I, I fail to see how that really is a matter for 4% change, when we consider that the second story is three quarters the size of the first story. We're talking about a relatively small change in the footprint. And as somebody who's now just about 70, I may need to sell my house at some point in the future. And this gives me particularly a benefit in maybe realizing a little bit more money for my home. When we talk about quality of life, we look across the waterway, and we're going to see a change that'll make 4% on our floor area ratio look like nothing. So I'd like to see, if somebody has a good reason for keeping this, other than the fact that we're stuck in the past, I'd like to hear about it, because I haven't changed my opinion one bit.
Okay, the, the good reason is that I ran on keeping the floor area ratio the same. Two candidates ran decisively as one of their major planks to increase the floor area ratio. Those two candidates lost, and I won. So it seems to me that is the majority opinion of the voters in Ocean Ridge, to keep the floor area ratio the same, number one. Number two, this was voted on by the commission before, within the last six months. And I don't know why planning and zoning wants to bring this up again. It's been voted on and down by the commission, been voted on and down by the voters. What's left?
But what's the, Mike, the question is, what is your, to the, to just to the subject of the floor area ratio, notwithstanding the voters, what is your opinion of why you want to increase, not increase it to 4%?
I do not want to increase to 4% because I don't want to see larger homes in Ocean Ridge, that simple. I think it's a good compromise to what we had before. It's worked, we got a good community now with the floor area ratio of what it is. Don't want to increase it.
Yeah, I, I'm the only negative vote against increase, so. I think it's, it's, in fact, our 36% is a fraction higher than most other communities of similar area. And I, I think quality of life, I appreciate what you said, but, you know, we have fairly modest sized lots. If you want, there's beach lots, there are open lots, so I just don't think we should forfeit our FAR or our lot coverage for, you know, occasional desire to have a bigger house. And that's just, so I stand. You want to say?
Go ahead.
Ed Brooks, 15, East Ocean Avenue. Got a little nervous at a meeting at Ocean Ridge when the first thing that comes up is bullet guns, so. I actually don't have an opinion on this, but there's no realtors here. I can't believe that people are walking away and say, boy, if that house was just 4% larger, I'd be writing a check. I, I don't know anything about that, but I don't see we're losing property or people finding in town for 4%. I mean, if you were here lobbying for 20%, you know, a real issue, which may be, but I, I don't quite get it. I think it's working the way it is, and to the commissioner's point, there was an election, and that was one of the issues that came up, and there's not a lot of this here, but I would agree with the commissioner that this is what the town voted, you know, kind of voted for, so. But I don't, I don't see the 4% as people running away from Ocean Ridge for that little bit, anyway.
Thank you, Ed. Can I talk to, ask the P and Z? I'm very bad at design and architecture, but I read all the literature here. There's this fascinating word, fascinating word, envelope, right? And then when I was campaigning, what, what people were angry about was if they had a two story foyer or a two story cavernous living room, that the town would not allow them to create a second floor or a loft or some kind of bedroom, to your point about younger families coming in. So can, can the P and Z come up with, instead of going to this FAR, right, which is going to increase the mass, everyone looks at FAR like, okay, you're going to have an additional 400 square feet out of 10,000 acres, 10,000 square feet. So you've got 400 here, wow, that doesn't sound like much. Well, now, let's take, pretend into that one home, we've got three homes together. Now you've got 1,200 square feet on the same amount of land, which starts to get, make me feel nervous. But if you go to this envelope idea, you're going to keep the outside of the house the same. And then inside, if somebody chooses to have a fourth bedroom instead of a soaring ceiling, that's their choice, and it doesn't affect the architectural look, at least I'm not an expert, Mark is, it doesn't affect the architectural look of the house. But nowhere have I heard in these meetings for the last, I don't know how many years, I've never heard anyone attack the envelope idea, and it's always about the FAR idea.
Well, the envelope idea is addressed somewhat, because you get penalized for over 16 feet. I think it's 16 or...
What do you mean by penalized over 16?
If you have a 20 foot high foyer...
Yeah.
A percentage of that goes against your FAR as another story. It's not a full story or floor area. But you do, there is a penalty clause for that, so.
So if I put, put a 20 foot tall ceiling, instead of counting as 300 feet on FAR, it counts as 350 feet? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, the first floor area on the ceilings, which are 16 feet or higher, shall count as double, so.
Isn't that something, you guys, as a group, could review?
You could use it for floor area, but you, you, that's what makes no sense, that people that want these gigantic towering things are actually giving up their ability.
You're looking at it as new construction. When I was actually walking around the streets, it was the people that wanted to renovate their house, like you want to renovate your house to, to gain some square footage, they couldn't do it, even though they had the 20, 16 foot ceilings, whatever. They, they weren't given the option to, to reduce the, the ceiling height, to add a bedroom to make their home more saleable. So I don't, is that something that you guys can sort out?
It's very difficult. It goes, you know, application by application. We try to be uni, universal here in terms of guidance, but you can't look at one issue independently. You've just got to, especially on an existing structure.
So no town that you're aware of or no municipality goes to volume versus FAR?
Palm Beach does.
So why don't we charge P and Z to look at volume instead of FAR?
It's not a very conducive thing to development, especially to expansion. You're penalized drastically. Your, your lower ceiling heights because it's volume. It's a CCR, it's cubic content ratio, it's called. And it's, it's, it's set up for lots similar to ours, the 100 by 150. And it equates back to about 35%.
I, I don't get it, but...
It's, it's, it's a very penalizing thing, and it's done for mass, protecting mass, because your volume is...
Isn't that what we're trying to accomplish here? People want more living space, but they don't, we don't want neighborhood mass.
I'm suggesting to the town and to the, the commission that, you know, be careful what you ask for, because it does, it's very impact. It creates eight and a half foot ceilings, eight foot ceilings, if you want more area. So it's, it's not a, it's a very complicated thing. I mean, I, I personally dislike it, but it, it does what it's intended to do. Oh, absolutely, so please don't.
Well, change the envelope.
Pardon?
Change the envelope, then.
No, it lowers the envelope, that's what you'll see, the mass.
Right, but what I'm saying is you guys are on FAR, everyone's FAR FAR FAR, and then the envelope's here, which is stopping people from...
They're all related, I mean, they're interrelated, so. But please don't, don't adopt, let's keep your concentration.
Hi, Ken Khalil, 86 Island Drive South. We've wrestled with this for years, years and years. And I, I go back to, I, I remember early on when, under the new code, 2001 to three, when we were going through this. And it's not a question of looking back at history, but if you don't look at history, you're deemed, you're doomed to repeat it. And we hired Urban Land Design Studios, we had Digby, very active, and we wrestled with this thing for a long period of time, had several meetings on it. And we wrestled with this thing for a long period of time, had several meetings on it. And the really, what Commissioner Koz said, were, you know, the goal was to control the massing. And even then, when we contemplated that code, we would not have imagined the advantages that the architects dreamt up to create a larger massing than what we originally wanted. So now we are faced with, I can't imagine, just go down, go down my street and look at the homes, you can look at four homes in a row that are pretty much maxed out. I don't think, I don't think you could argue that you'd want a bigger home. I mean, it's just from a massing perspective. I certainly understand that inside that home is a different issue. But if we can control the outside massing, it has a very big impact on what happens, what you can do on the inside, if that makes sense, and very similar to what Mr. Koz was alluding to, I think. But, so what we did is we created this balance in the code that Mr. Marsh pointed out with the FAR combined with the other things to create this tug-of-war that was going on in order to try to control the massing. So, as a P and Z, if I were to relook at this, I'd look at, okay, so we don't want to increase the massing, but we want to have more available square footage in the home. How you play with that, I'm, it's beyond me. I'll leave it up to the experts to do that. But just to carte blanche say, to create a 4% increase is a lot. Because once you do that, it creates more massing. And it creates more massing to the neighbor, and to the next neighbor, and all the way down the line. So it's not just that. It really isn't. It creates more. So if you can control the massing, in other words, reduce the massing and increase your living space, I'm all in favor of it. But just to carte blanche increase the FAR, just to increase the FAR, I haven't heard one good reason. Not even the quality of life. I raised three kids in my house, three kids. What would be considered a large family. I don't think our quality of life has been impacted by a two-car garage or the size of our home. So I'm not buying that argument. It's a question of massing and design, and how we can create that balance without creating a larger massing, I'm all in favor of it, but just to carte blanche do it, I'm not.
Thank you.
One other question, if you don't mind. Going back, did you guys agree to do a notice provision at a minimum?
No.
Okay.
Very quickly, perhaps one practical letter we could look at is to Steve's point, Mark's point, that maybe we don't penalize people for going above a 16-foot-high ceiling, and we allow them to go higher without penalizing them and subtracting from their ability to add to the floor area square footage. And yeah, we're, it's coming in as another angle.
To Ken, to Ken.
Well, I have, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. What Ken was describing as massing, I'm not really clear what massing is. I mean, mass is weight and volume is area, and I'm just, I'm unclear when you say massing.
Basically, if you're looking at a home, literally looking at one big box, in other words.
Right.
You know, but the thing is.
So we're not about volume, we're about.
Because your setbacks are your setbacks. I mean, you only build to the setbacks in the story. Whether it's 36%, whatever, you're still building 20, 25, 15, and 15, and 36. Let's face it, that's what it is. So, what about, I mean, like anything, though, over time, it's always a point where there are exceptions to the rule, where things happen and it has to be tweaked. And it seems like, yes, to just blankly say 4% may not be the answer. But how about looking at slot size considering the percentage? You know, if there's a certain lot size that's 10,000 square feet or 9,000 square feet versus a lot sizes 12 and 13, it's a different, it's a different massing.
Pretty black and white, find a bigger lot.
Yeah.
Well, but you know, you get a lot of lots, so, Mark.
Why two lots? I mean, why, you know, impact the neighborhoods?
I thought the code was if you have a lot less than, let's say, 7,500, you can go to 40, right?
Down at, that's the.
That was down at the south end. To get to, back to the history of this, there's, all of these things are integrated. You guys are all forgetting that when we looked at all this, these things that Ken was just talking about, we have the floor area ratio, we have lot size, we have permeable land, we have pool, we have the septic tank drain field, we have all the setbacks, and all of these are integrated. And that's kind of how we got to the 36%. And in order to control the massing of the building, when you start changing one of the elements in the formula, which is the floor area ratio, you've got to look also at how that's going to impact on all these other things, the permeable land, the setbacks, the two-story rule with, what is it? The 75% rule. All of those things were put together when we did this way back in 2000. Because I was on P and Z back then, and I sat through all these discussions and hearings on P and Z. These are all integrated numbers, and you change one set of numbers, you've got to look at the whole set of numbers for building a home. And you can't just change the floor area ratio without affecting the other things. And I disagree, it's not really a quality of life. If you don't think you have enough space for storage, store it off-site, okay? If you don't like the parking, find a house with better parking. You know, and it's, I kind of have a hard time understanding how a family of two or three kids, when you look at the value of the house, 800 or $900,000 is about the average new house in Palm, in Ocean Ridge. If you can afford that kind of a house, and you got, you're not a starter family, that's for sure. You don't have kids, that's for sure. The average age in Ocean Ridge is about 56. You don't have toddlers, you have adults, most likely. So it really isn't a quality of life issue, I don't think. I think you hit the nail on the head. It's, I want to make more money off my house when I go to sell. That's the real issue. You hit the nail on the head. That's, and it's all couched in all these terms of quality of life, and let's get better houses, and let's get up to date. But the bottom line is, when I sell my house, I want to make more money. That's the bottom line. And I don't see any other quality of life other than, you know, making more money.
Well, would you, would it fair statement to say that Ocean Ridge is undervalued as a property?
Well, do I think Ocean Ridge is undervalued? I have no idea. I'm not a property praiser. I do know that, though, a lot of people think that the value of their homes on the intercoastal are undervalued because they compare their homes to areas like Boca Raton and Delray. But one of the things they've got to look at is these homes on the intercoastal are under, are lower than Boca Raton and Delray, because we don't have ocean access to park your yacht. If you want to get to the ocean with a boat that's more than 16 feet, you can't get to the ocean through the Boynton Inlet, which is also a very dangerous inlet. So people park their boats, with larger boats, look to buy homes in Boca Raton, because you have easier ocean access for your larger boats. That's one of the things that's keeping the values down in Ocean Ridge. Not the fact that we have 4% less than what you want. All right. I mean, you want, do I think it's undervalued? No, I think it's properly valued.
Are we punting?
What's that?
Are we punting?
Yes, it looks like that way we're. Terry, you want to come to say on this one? No.
I agree with the comments that Ken Khalil made and with Commissioner Bongfiglio. I'm not their friends, but I like their position. I voted for Jim for that reason.
Always a caveat with you.
But that was elections all about.
For the record, I'm not a friend of Mr. Brown either.
But if you just say you can be friends. If you look at the floor area ratio in the code, it doesn't include the patios that are not enclosed, correct? But it does include the garage, is that correct? So you have a two-car garage. Just look at the house entering Harbor Drive North or South. And look at, that house met the code, right, Mr. McIntosh, the floor area ratio. Drive up to that house and just think about the mass, Ken brought up the mass, of what it would look like if it was 4% or 5% larger. The covered patios are not included, the garage is included. You just see the larger mass, no matter how much landscaping they do around that house, it's not going to soften the look of it. So I do agree that we need to keep it at 36%. And I think that the value of the property on a 4% increase is minimal. It's just a marketing thing that the builders and developers want, and everything is based on money instead of quality of life.
Okay, so I think we've beat that to death pretty good, so moving on to the next one. Flat roofs. I didn't know that was an issue. I thought we didn't have any more flat roofs. All right, so who wants to begin with flat roofs? What brought this particular subject up? Anybody?
No, I think the time has come, as you've seen by a number of houses in town. And it was all started by the Melnick property many years ago. A flat roof is a flat roof. We've been kidding ourselves here. I think there is, I think most of us know that the criteria to avoid the flat roof is to have roofs that have a minimum of 4 and 12. So what everybody's doing now is doing these little mini hip roofs behind a parapet. And I will challenge anybody, the house in Hudson, you ask any layperson that walks by, is that a flat roof? They, I will put my money that 99% of them will say yes. So I think the time has come where, you know, we're going to get more and more of this, I call it silliness, where you have these little mini roofs. And it'd be interesting for you, if you haven't seen the roof plan of that house. It has, I would say, man, you might have to help me here, maybe 20 little peaks.
Yes.
At least 20 little peaks that go up 4 and 12, but they're not even the width of this desk. So I think, you know, they're here to stay. I mean, I think you're either be flat or you're a hip roof. I'm just suggesting to the commission that somehow, and the attorney, we either look at, either we're going to outlaw flat roofs totally, or we're going to allow. I mean, this, this whole kind of evasive approach to flat roof design is really, it's really not doing anybody, and it's not doing the homeowner any good, because it creates a series of very, you know, unusual roof structures that create a number of drainage issues. And so I just think that we need to come, you know, let's draw the line in the sand. Do we want flat roofs or don't we want flat roofs? So it's not a subject that's going to be answered today, or, but I think I just wanted to alert everybody that flat roofs are here. They have been here. Melnick started it through the same issue of the little 4 and 12. Stat can't deny it, because they meet the criteria. But it's not a hip roof. It's just a, it's a series of little pyramid roofs that are hidden behind a parapet. And I think the unfortunate thing is that parapet has to be so high to mask those little mini hips, that it has even more impact. That one in the end of Hudson, I would say is approximately 34 feet in vertical height, just on the sheer walls themselves. So, you know, if we want to have flat roofs, there's ways to lower them down. I think that's so off the chart in terms of height and scale, and we just spent a half hour talking about mass and the impact that it has on a neighborhood. So I just like to hear some opinions of commission and other fellow P and Z board members as to how or do we need to address this. But I think we're just, we're putting a mask over our eyes here, and I think we're kidding ourselves, so.
I totally agree with Mark. We have really two issues here. One is an aesthetic issue, and one is a technical issue. The problem here that we're addressing today is a technical issue. And that is the convoluted method that a architect or builder goes through to create a flat roof look. It's just not practical. And I think we need to address that. On the other hand, we have the other issue, which is an aesthetic issue, as Mark points out. And that is, do we want flat roofs or not? I don't think that's the issue on the table today.
No, but it's related to the technical.
So what you're saying is you want to go back to the building code we went through in 2001 and look at something that may need to be changed?
Yeah, I think it.
Wouldn't that discussion we just had on the floor area ratio too, and the lot sizes, it seems that it's all the same.
This is completely different, because you're creating or you're encouraging an aesthetic element that may, people may see not appropriate for the town.
Well, I don't want to debate flat roofs right now, but what's stopping me from building the 36% in a flat roof? And having the same straight-up wall at the top?
As I said, you have to look at the parapet huts. That's the impact that you're going to have.
That confuses me. So you said the vertical wall is 34? So the parapets don't count?
No, no, no. 36% is, 36 feet is 36 feet.
No, but you're saying it doesn't count?
The total amount of a structure, if it's two stories, 36 feet, period.
Including these fake disguises?
The only thing that can go above the 36 feet for a two-story is the chimney or other incidental like that.
So if you can imagine, on a normal two-story house that has a hip roof, I think 24 is the height for the tie beam on the second floor. Then you have a hip roof which is sloping away, normally unless it's a gable. And that can go up to 36 feet. But under our current code, you can build a parapet wall vertically 36 feet, and that's not what we want to see. Imagine a neighbor living with a shadow of that, you know, 15 feet away. I just don't think that's what the town is looking for.
What's the difference between a shadow of that and the shadow of the gable roof, if it's 36-foot?
Well, because it's going to a ridge vertically on the outer edge.
Oh, I get you, okay.
So again, it's all about mass. I mean, this is a great example of mass.
No, I understand.
And as Jerry said, you know, it's a technical issue where you can create or circumvent through these little convoluted systems to elude that requirement and still have this very, you know, I think evasive element in terms of 36, so high wall. So the question is, Jeff, I think is, you know, I think it needs some discussion. And it'd be nice to see an opinion, and it could come down to a simple thing of, do we want flat roofs? They're here.
They're just in a different form.
But, you know, in a different form and different criteria for limiting the parapet's heights, like other towns do. Gulfstream is the only town I know that, you know, prohibits flat roofs. You can only have 10% of a roof flat. But most other, you know, because, again, you don't want to mandate architectural stuff. I mean, as we know, there are trends that come and go. But I just think it's farcical to have what we have here. I really, I can't think of a better word.
So what, you want to bring that something, you want to, the P and Z should discuss?
I think the commission should give us some direction as to whether we want flat roofs in town or not. But we can't keep on with this hybrid condition that's.
Well, you'd have to define, your definition of flat roof would have to be changed then as well, if not.
Correct, absolutely.
I mean, you'd have to change parapet height, you'd have to change all that, to define exactly what a flat roof is. So you're basically just, you're saying that you want then change the definition of what a flat roof is, because you already have no flat roofs. So rather than say, no more flat roofs, we already have that in our code, correct? So why don't we just change the definition of what a flat roof is?
Yeah, I mean, call it what it is.
Yeah, you know what I mean, it's like, well, because if you already have it in there, you're going to say, okay, we're going to be redundant and say it again. To me, what it is, is you're changing the definition of what a flat roof is. That's what you're doing.
Mark or Jerry, do you remember, I mean, I know we didn't want those when we initially adopted the 2000, whatever. when we initially adopted the two thousand, whatever it was code. I just don't remember how we got to that. Can you, oh, Ken remembers. I'm just trying to remember and I don't remember how we got there.
I remember. Those were all painful meetings. That's why I remember that prior history from ninety-six to two thousand and five. There was a lot of stuff going on during that time period, so I remember a lot of this. But it wasn't the Melnick house that caused the backlash for the flat roofs. It was actually the house on, on Harbor Drive South.
South, okay.
That caused the backlash. At the time, that square look was not in vogue. And so there was a big push, and I think Digby was, was a very much an advocate of no flat roofs. And others, I mean, that was the sentiment at the time that they didn't want flat roofs. Gulfstream didn't permit it. And a lot of municipalities at that time started to get away from allowing flat roofs. And in addition to that, it caused all sorts of headaches because of the rains and everything else. And I think now the construction's a lot better for that stuff. But that was the impetus of the, of that design criteria is that people didn't want the warehouse look. And that was what was trying to be avoided. But, you know, given a set of circumstances, a good architect, like Mark, like, like others, will find a way around whatever you're trying to do. And so I think the mayor has it right on point. It's really, you're changing the definition of flat. You have two discussions going on. One is, do you want to change the definition of flat roofs to avoid that exception? Or B, do you want to just discuss the fact whether or not you should have flat roofs anymore? Because if you look at the trend and what's going on in Delray, there's little warehouses going on up all over the place. This block look that's going on in Hudson now, that seems to be the in vogue thing. Over time, it may not, it might start to, you know, people might get tired of it. And then the market changes. Manalapan, I think, just did away with their restrictions on flat roofs. You know, citing the Frank, Frank, Frank Lloyd Wright. And, you know, there's a lot of famous architects that you could not, they could not come and build a house here in Ocean Ridge because of that theoretically. So I think Mark's right. You should have a, P and Z should have a discussion as to what is the sentiment of the town? And if you want to go down that path of designing or, or dictating design criteria such as a flat roof, then so be it. If not, you change the definition, as the mayor said, and move on with life. Whatever, whatever you guys want to do. But that's the impetus. It was the house on Harbor Drive South that created the uproar. And it just carried steam and it rolled through. And it was, the timing was, you know, with construction at the time, there's a lot of issues. People were complaining about their flat roofs and, I mean, there was a lot of stuff going on, but revisit.
Just to emphasize, there are really two issues here, as Mark points out. One is the definition of a flat roof. And what we see at the corner of Hudson and May one A is the problem with our current definition. That is, what looks like a flat roof, but inside those parapet walls, you've got a pitched roof as a way of getting around our prohibition. So I think at a minimum, we need to address the definition of a flat roof. And if we want to, on the other hand, look at the broader picture, the bigger picture, and decide whether or not we want flat roofs or not. But there are two issues. One, we need to look at.
All right, so then it seems like the consensus to look at it, plan zoning, and come back with what your thoughts are regarding on definitions of what a flat roof is or isn't, and how we change it. So I can understand the massing point. Because if I'm next door to a house that has a thirty-six foot high concrete wall, no windows in it, that's going to be a pretty huge structure.
By the way, the, the one opposite on the ocean.
Yeah.
Is a flat roof.
Right.
Yeah.
But it has a sloped roof that's about, what, eighty feet long?
That's it.
I mean, there's a pitch on there, but it's.
I guess they, they must have got my name and followed me.
Ed Ruck's fifteen East Ocean Avenue. I keep coming up here with absolutely no opinions on this stuff.
Then what are you coming up here for?
I'm learning, I'm learning.
Share your opinion with us.
The only thing I would point out, I think it has something to do with the other conversation. A flat roof, I think, allows you to build a fairly contemporary home. And if you would drop that, I think that's going to hurt property values more than a four percent. Things are going contemporary. People are spending serious money for contemporary homes. I, I think if, you know, tread softly because if you, all of a sudden, everything has to look Key West style or with a pitched roof, and you don't really allow for whether you like the aesthetic or not, that's a different issue, which I guess we'll get into. But I think that will hurt your property values much more than changing the far by a minimal amount.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move on to number five.
If, if I can not to beat a dead horse here, but I guess so the direction is that you want to go ahead and have P and Z look at either the definition or possibly doing away or, or allowing flat roofs, I guess, is that, that is the question?
That is what they're going to look at. Well, two things, are they going to allow flat roofs? Or are we going to change the definition of what a flat roof can or cannot be regarding parapets and everything else that goes along with it?
Okay, and I, and I think what Mr. Marsh was kind of, you know, kind of asking that question was, do you, you know, does this commission now, is there, you know, I don't want to say direction, but I guess, do you have any opinion on?
Well, I would look and see what the definition would change to before I make an opinion on it.
It's back at you, Brian.
Well, that's why I'm asking kind of the question here, because I don't, you know, because I have a feeling, you know, when we go to P and Z, you know, we'll need to kind of come up with a draft ordinance or something like that to say, okay, which direction do we want to go in? And if, if we can have, you know, or, you know, I guess if, if this commission has any feelings, strong feelings, one way or the other, that may help in the way that we look at that at the P and Z level. Whereas, okay, well, look, let's just go ahead and allow flat roofs. Well, then what does that mean? Well, then you have to have restrictions. Do you want to allow swimming pools on top? Do you want to allow, allow, you know, different living areas on top of it? I mean, it goes into all those different things that we would have to consider. And so I guess that's part of the question is, do we even go down that road? Or yours, or is this body kind of, you know, I, I understand you haven't looked at anything, but, you know, or there's strong opinions one way or the other? Because once again, this is not going to be a simple little ordinance. It, it, you know, it morphs into, there's lots of other playing, you know, parts to this.
Well, I mean, different, the definition, right now, we, we don't allow flat roofs in the town, correct?
Well, no. You, you do, you are allowed fifteen percent flat roof, plain flat roof for decking. And it can go to twenty percent if it's used for a deck and walk and stuff. But you are.
Yeah, that's more than decking. I mean, the, the point we're kind of looking at here is the actual roof structure, in other words, right?
No.
And right now, we have a pitch, we do have a pitch.
The minimum pitch, four twelve, anything less is a flat roof. But you do, you, you are allowed to have a small percentage of a flat roof. I mean, take a look at balconies, that roof, a first floor for the purpose of that seventy-five percent rule. The second, so that's going to come into play.
I think, Mr. Mayor, could I ask Brian to research what other communities similar in character, size, and bring it to P and Z for us to? It, it's going to take some time to.
I think so too. It's going to, you won't, we don't want to keep going over and over this thing.
No, but we need to thrash it out. And Brian's been very helpful by providing us with resources, so.
And we've been very helpful providing him with resources. Yes.
Okay, I, I understand. I will bring that forward, okay?
Okay. All right, now to the big one, site plan review ordinance. Number five. Who'd like to begin?
Well, let me, let me start by asking, what's, what's the problem that this is supposed to address? Is there a public health, safety, or welfare issue? I mean, I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand what, what policy issue site review plan is supposed to address. Can anybody?
Well, if I can, I mean, just, just very generally, what this ordinance now, as far as is there a public health, safety, welfare, no, I, I, I don't see what, you know, where this addresses that. I think what this addresses is, I guess, possibly a concern that the town would like to have better, or, or I guess some input on single-family homes or two-family homes that are being constructed here in the town. And when I say input, and that involves new construction, and, and I'm just speaking on what the ordinance said, you know, what the ordinance says, not, not my opinion or anything like that. But the input is for new construction or where the exterior renovations involve more than fifty percent of, of the value of the structure. And I understand there's all sorts of issues on coming up with that fifty percent. I, I understand that completely. What this will do is this will then give the, or direct the planning and zoning commission to go ahead and review, you know, these type of projects coming forward. And then they will have criteria that's listed, you know, for their, where they review. And once again, you know, the criteria was in the proposed ordinance. And once again, that is just something that, you know, that the P and Z commission would look at. And I also understand that most of this criteria, as in most codes dealing with site plan, is subjective in nature. And there's really no way to, to get around that. So that's, that's kind of where this is. And it probably didn't address your question, but.
So how is it enforceable if it's purely subjective?
I, I think it is enforceable, as in most other municipalities, where they also have criteria such as this. And in most cases, a board, if someone comes forward to a board and a board makes a recommendation or a board makes a ruling on something, the property owner then can, you know, if the property owner complies with that direction given by the board or with the order, the board order, then the property owner can continue on and get their building permit and do that as long as it is, as long as their building plans are in compliance with the order from the P and Z board, which also looked at their plans. If they're, you know, if they're, if they submit plans that are not in compliance with that, a building permit will not be issued. And then they would have to go ahead and appeal that up to you all. And then if they do not like the decision that they receive from you, then they would have to appeal that up to circuit court.
And, and what are the chances of us winning in circuit court?
Well, I can tell you, I mean, in most cases, courts give great deference to the legislative bodies. In my twenty-some years of doing this, I've, I've probably won more writs of cert than I have lost. But I have lost some because, you know, you look at it and they, let's say, an administrative decision from, from the governing body was just incorrect. And the court realized that. And they, they gave an order basically saying, no, we're directing the legislative body to go ahead and approve this plan in conformance with, with the plan submitted or with the code. And then the legislative body goes back and says, okay, we'll approve it. And that's that. So as far as damages or things like that, there's not a lot there. Of course, once again, it's the mayor's favorite topic. The only thing that come, you know, that, that impacts this is the attorney's fees in fighting something like this, which I'm not sure that your insurance would cover. It would probably, you know, probably, that may not be a, an insurable issue there. So how often that would happen, I don't know. Because in most cases, you know, the boards that I have seen in other municipalities try to work with people to accomplish something. And if that can't be done, then it's, if it's appealed up to you all, then, you know, we have another bite at the apple as well, so.
So if we hit a homeowner who is adamant about his application and really wants to build that, which P and Z denied and the commission refused in return, he files suit and probably will win?
I, it depends on if his criteria, if he is, if he is proposing something that is pretty, you know, that looks like, well, this is pretty close to the code here. What, what is the issue here? In most cases that I've seen, both parts, both sides can kind of work it out. However, if you do have a property owner who is complete, you know, who is very adamant that says, look, I meet the code requirements now, however, I do not meet, or however, you have the planning and zoning board saying that I am not meeting some of the criteria that's in this ordinance. And then you uphold that. You know, it's, it's a factual scenario. But once again, you know, courts give deference to the legislative, you know, the legislative body. That's, that's about all I can say. So I can't give percentages.
It just seems that we're, we're laying down another item that another hoop that the homeowner has to jump through. Another item of cost, another area of dispute. Especially when we substituted the words shall to should in the legislation because shall's mandatory, should is a little less mandatory. We're, all we're doing is laying down the groundwork for a dispute. It's going to cost us a lot of money, especially if we get in, I guess it's an O'Boyle kind of character who, who wants to fight. It's going to cost us a lot of money. To what end? I mean, especially if the, if the house that he proposes meets all of the code criteria. I mean, to what end?
So can I, sorry.
No, you go first because I'll contradict you.
I, I think that the reason for this is twofold. And a lot of what we've spent the last hour and a half discussing comes onto this. Right now, we have staff in Manny that's put in a very awkward position to make a judgment. If it meets all the setbacks and all the criteria, it's fine. But we've been talking about mass, volume, styles. These are all things that are going to come into play more and more as people find Ocean Ridge as a, as a, you know, an area that they desire. So I think, and I keep repeating this, this is the only coastal community, and I don't want to compare anywhere else because we're a coastal community, that does not have any kind of review process. I think we're starting to get these, I, I don't want to say violations, but deviations from what we all like to see Ocean Ridge. And you said it earlier about even denying the four percent. These are all things that come up during a site plan review. We're not trying to mandate style. I think we're, it sounds like we're going to allow flat roofs. We, we're going to encourage. But we want to see before a applicant or an owner gets so far down the line that Manny has to talk to Jamie and say, hey, we've got a problem here. How do we deal with it? You've got a set of permissible working drawings that the town may not see as an appropriate solution for that design or that's appropriate. So what we're trying to do here, and I know Steve's concern is we're not mandating colors. This is really more of a land use zoning issue with some aesthetic reference. And I think it's only fair, whereas Jamie mentioned earlier, we have an onslaught of permits. So it's, it's open season in Ocean Ridge. If we don't have some form, and it does not have to be like Palm Beach. Palm Beach, I, I'm there every two weeks. It's absurd, Arco. Gulfstream is very difficult as well. Manalapan is a little. I think the fear that you and I think Mr. Khalil share is, is a challenge down the road. But I think it behooves the town to have some guidance or some guideline by which an evaluation or at least a review is, is made on an application just to see that things are meeting the basic criteria. I mean, we just discussed about this flat roof thing. I mean, and it's nothing, I mean, the format here is very diluted compared to other communities. But it's a starting point where before people make a major investment, they, they can find out, yes, this is going to be compatible. It's going to work in Ocean Ridge. It can be unique as long as it, the style is done in a correct manner and it's not a, you know, something that's so way off the chart. And this has come up by a couple of recent applications. I think one you've seen on Tropical and, what do you call it?
Old Ocean?
And even the one on the three-story building on, across the road on the ocean, which everybody is like flabbergasted, how the heck did that get?
First of all, that's not a three-story building.
It's a two-story.
It's a two-story. And they took advantage of the code by putting in a mezzanine deck. It's a two-story, and they took advantage of the code by putting in a mezzanine deck that is not a three-story. So to say that is, is incorrect.
I'm struggling though with, I mean, what would have happened with those houses you just cited if we had had this Architectural Review Board? Would the Architectural Review Board have said, no, those homes are not aesthetically pleasing? And then what?
It's not only aesthetic.
Because they met all the criteria.
Don't misunderstand. It's the zoning criteria, interpreting the zoning land use criteria as well as the aesthetic. The one, and I don't want to keep repeating, example, is the definition of where the front of the house is. Where is the front of the house? And, you know, an architect or an owner can make a decision that, in their terms or in their interpretation, one area is the front of the house, when the code says completely different. It's an interpretive thing. And those are the kinds of things that we've got to iron out at a very preliminary stage of a project. Not have a set of working drawings and then we have staff and everybody going, this doesn't look like it complies with our ordinance. It's really, it's not intended to be a huge veil of subjection that, as Brian mentioned. It's just the fact that I think, and I may be totally wrong, but I put my neck on the line here, that the town is, is going to be under barrage by a lot of people that can't afford Delray, to your point earlier, and come, see Ocean Ridge as a great place to come in and do their dream house. And it may not be in the eyes of the community what we're, what we're seeing as appropriate. Compatible is another loose word, so I don't want to get into the legal aspects of that. It's just the fact that there is, we can say to an applicant, this is so far off the chart of uniqueness, that we may have a problem, or the town may have a problem. And that, it's just another safety net. But it's going to pick up a lot of those things that we've just spent a lot of time reviewing.
So, Mark, I actually agree with ninety percent of what you've said. But you keep using the word review, right? So if you go through this, and that's kind of what the Commission struggled with previously when we changed shall to should, more of a review versus a...
And we heeded that.
Approval. Right. But now, if you look at D, it says you may deny. You guys can just deny an architectural plan.
Correct.
And it would have to be based upon C. So there's nothing in C that allows you to deny. But then when you get to point four here, you've got this great point, which uses the word review. What you're trying to do is to encourage people to stay to a certain type of architect, which is very different than having an approval. It's, you're talking a review process, but this ordinance is not review. This is approval. So I totally understand what you're saying. And then actually, this gentleman here brought it up. This, I wondered, does this, is the wrecking ball theory driving this? It's like, we had that house go up down there, which does meet code, I think, or anyway, they, they were clever. They, they used the codes against us, which caused you guys to now want to approve the architecture. Is that, so you're sort of looking at this as, you know...
Let me clarify, and I let everybody else. We're not trying to mandate stuff. As Mr. Khalil said, you know, right now, and Ed said, we have an onslaught of contemporary architecture. But it's got to be done proportionally and correctly. You can't just, if you...
But are those proportions and correctness already in the town codes?
No, but that's, that's the, that's the responsibility of this board to say, look, I think this is, we may have a thirty-six-foot-high wall. It's just a feature wall. And say, you know, this, this really doesn't look appropriate for the area or the neighborhood. It's deviating from what the intent is. And, and just make a suggestion. We're not going to, I think you're the final...
Make a suggestion's great. I think the town would totally embrace making a suggestion and review. It's when there's any teeth or approval ability that, that the residents are very, I don't know if you've talked to a lot of residents. You've probably talked to a lot of architects.
No, I...
Residents are like, get really hot on this.
No. This, this group here will make a recommendation. It's either going to be positive or negative. If it's negative, as Brian mentioned, it comes by appeal to you.
No, if it's negative, they can ignore it. If you, if you're a review.
Right. What I mean, I'm saying, if we for some reason deny or see a problem with the review.
You can't deny something if you're reviewing something. You can only deny something if you have approval.
But we can, we can help it out.
No, I mean, the, I think what it is, they have the process, they have the ability to grant approval or to deny it outright or to place conditions on it. The other matter that I think you're looking at under number four here is another process that is used in most communities as well, where someone can come to them at the very beginning before they do their supplemental set of plans and before they...
I get it, which is a great avenue.
Right.
Because then you know, as the contract's coming into town, that the town's going to be pleased with your end product. But it doesn't, it doesn't force them to have an end product. So there's a difference.
So I...
Mark, can I, Mark, can I ask you a question? The property that, on Anna Street, I brought up and had the administrative staff put up the picture of the front of the property and thought it was a good idea, the way the garage was set back and so on and so forth. And you went on the, on the ocean side and looked at it and found that it didn't really, it wasn't architecturally pleasing the way that, that it was designed. In that situation, would that have been approved? Or would, would you all have said, well, it really needs to be reviewed and ask the architect to go back and try a different rendering of it? Or would it then end up coming to the Commission?
Yeah, that's a good example. Again, that's the cliche, but a building has four sides.
Yes.
And I struggle with that sometimes myself. But it's important. Anything that's facing either a street or any right-of-way, which the ocean would be, then I think it's, it's, I think, appropriate for this or any board to say, look, this just really is so contradictory. You know, you've kind of complied or on one side, but you're just gone off the chart the other side. This would be where we'd, we'd, you know, make a statement or a recommendation at that point.
And it would be up to the architect then to go back and...
Yeah.
Take your recommendations and try to incorporate those into the redesign of the ocean side of the house?
Yes, hopefully.
Okay.
I don't want to, it's not a strong arm or, it's a fine line where I agree with what, I just think we need to have some safety net that gives us the ability to view the massing settings, which we've all spoken and led.
I think, if I may, please, Mark, you described and defined a very difficult issue very well. And this is not easily black or white. This is a very nuanced thing. And I think in order to have some, although imperfect oversight over what gets done in this town, this is at least a step in the right direction. Let me give you an example of what we might face, be faced with if we don't have something like this. It's hard to see, but if you drive up or down A-1A through Manalapan, there's an igloo house hidden behind missions. Geodesic. Thank you, Mark. Well spoken, Mr. Architect. Geodesic design. Now, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but I'm, I'm suggesting that that might be something we might scratch our head about and make a recommendation one way or another. But I think, I think Mark said it all, and I think this is at least a step in the right direction and instep with what coastal communities are doing in order to preserve...
Quality of life.
Quality of life. Yeah, exactly.
Everything we just spoke about.
Yeah, this is all about, I don't care what, with all due respect, what Mr. Blumpiglil said, we are really talking about overall quality of life. That's, that's why we're here. This is a great quality of life in this town. And I think it's not, this is not the answer to assuring quality of life, but it's a, it's a step in that direction. Thank you.
Well, I keep hearing those topics of this. And I think we have to ask ourselves, when a homeowner sets out to build, they're going to look for direction, how they spend their time, how they spend their money. What can we do to help them make this an easier process? And so, again, it goes back to the recommendations and also to help the staff in the town. The questions, the conversations, the volume of that going back and forth. I did that with Manny years, years ago. So this is really just to help the homeowner with time and money in the process of, of maintaining some kind of aesthetic value, not necessarily saying this is what you should be building or not building.
I have an opinion on that. Ed Brooks, fifteen East Ocean Avenue, a little convoluted, I guess. Maybe I'll represent some of the homeowners. We, none of us moved into an HOA. We don't want to live in an HOA. We've all become, you know, fairly successful in our lives and like to spend our money the way we like to spend it within, within reason. So a lot of rules and regulations like this. I get very, very nervous when I read the ordinance. I, to your point, you know, the approval or denial, words matter. It's not, oh, we'll be nice and help you out along this path. You could say yes, or you could say no. I've, most of my career, continuing today, I've, I've been involved in design, in furniture. Vice President of a couple of companies, most notably Brown Gordon Furniture High End. I've had arguments about, is there such a thing as good taste? Is that quantifiable? Very, very difficult. And this is with design professionals, people that, like Philippe Stark. Very hard to define what is good taste. And I'm sure you all have very good taste. But I'm not sure who should, like I said at the meeting, who is the keeper of good taste in town? You, you all may change. And I know, I love contemporary architecture. My wife hates it. It's just, we all have a different paradigm. And I get concerned when I read about aesthetics and color. Don't even get started on color. I mean, what homes are painted today, our parents would have never have used those colors, because it changes. Tastes, styles change. And even though I think it's well-intentioned, you know, some people are going to say, well, we'd like the town to look like Key West. That's a great style. Some people come in and say, we'd like it to be like Miami Beach. That's phenomenal in, in that architecture. But what about New England? To give you two concrete examples, let's say somebody wants to build a house on Hudson. What's now the median that you use as what matches? Is it the, the home on the south side of Hudson in A-1A? Or is it the new home on the north side of Hudson? Is it the homes on the intercoastal? Or is it, you know, God bless the soul, Larry O'Daly's house? What, what blends on Hudson today? What would you use as criteria? It really boils down to, with all due respect, to what you all think is attractive. And you can't get, you can't really get away from that. So I'm very, very concerned about that. To give you another concrete example of deciding whether something fits in the town, look at the building you're sitting in. This matches nothing. Nothing. So would this have been something that would have got approved? Obviously, there's a lot of people that liked it. I'm, I'm, I think it's nice looking. But it doesn't match the town. It doesn't, is it ugly? Is it, you know, I don't, you got to be careful. Like I said, I spent my whole career in, what is good taste? What, what is trendy? What is not trendy? What, what is, has, has legs? Sustainability as far as, as more, you know, some architecture lasts forever. Some is very, very trendy. I think you can charge more for a geodesic dome than an igloo, though. I think, I think that's all in the terminology. But anyway, that's...
I, everything you said is correct. I, again, I think, you know, it's, it's a fine line. Nobody, and I let everybody speak, we're not trying to mandate a style.
But that, but that's a few...
That's the beauty of this town.
But if you read that ordinance, then maybe it's just the wording.
Those are basic, those are basic criteria.
Yeah, but when you use color and approval.
I thought you took the color off.
Yeah, I don't want to, I know, I...
You know what you're talking, here's what I think to some of what both of you're saying. Why don't you guys put together guidelines? Like, it's what, I know you mentioned Delray. Well, Delray Beach along that ocean strip has guidelines. We please do this. You don't have to do it. Here's the guidelines we'd like you to follow. That's what you're talking. Your language says guidelines.
Yeah, and that may be, and I think that's what Kim's saying as well, is that...
Well, actually, it's kind of funny that Kim was speaking, because I bet you, if we had an Architectural Review Board with approval, you wouldn't have been able to build your house anyway, architecturally.
It's the should versus shall. True.
I, I don't think there's any objection to guidelines. All we're trying to do is just make sure...
And I don't think the town has any objection to guidelines. Maybe it's a first step and revisit it in ten years.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the guideline, it doesn't have to, I think, correct me,
Brian, I, I think the guidelines, like, I can only reflect on Gulfstream, they have a manual, which we don't want to get into. I think that's, you know, preferred, discouraged, prohibited. That's not why we're here. But I think a guideline has to tie into some kind of ordinance.
See, that's where I have a problem.
Yeah, I think this has to be enforceable.
Right. It's not enforceable. Guidelines are not enforceable. The other thing is, everyone keeps, I mentioned, quality of life and the look of the town. So when was Ocean Ridge Incorporated, nineteen thirty-four?
Nineteen thirty-one.
So we're in two thousand and seventeen, and everybody's saying it's a great quality of life and a great look in town. And we haven't had an Architectural Review Board during that entire time period.
But we're lucky.
Now, we're looking at it, that suddenly, the world's changed, and suddenly this contemporary design is coming in. Well, back in the sixties, they were probably talking about the geodesic domes coming in. So you see what I'm saying? It's...
I don't, I think it's unfair to refer to one's style. I just think, as Ed pointed out very succinctly, the town is fortunate that we have this really patchwork of styles, which all complement each other. It creates an individuality. That's what we want to maintain. And I, but I think it all goes back, I keep repeating myself, everything that we've discussed this morning prior to this item has been, is going to be part of this guideline to help applicants, to give them some direction as to where, what we're, what we'd like to see in the town. It's not, I don't think it has to be a...
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Totally.
But that's, I think, it's, right now, it's interpretive. Manny is charged with interpreting the, you know, these, these aesthetics. And, you know, he'll be the first to tell you. I'm not, you know, he's, he's very qualified, but he's not going to tell you he's comfortable with a certain style, or this doesn't seem to be...
Yeah, I get it.
Reflecting what we're looking at. So we're just moving it from that position to this ward here. And whatever...
But, but the difference is, the homeowner can ignore your guidelines. See, that's where I'm coming from.
If they, it's agreed strongly, it's, you know, we, we'll have a vote. It could be four to against. It goes to you. You're the, you're the people that make the final decision. That's, that's the beauty of the system. And I've been there on both sides. I've had appeals go into the town councils and commissions because I don't agree with the interpretation. So, but it, it's a process.
Mayor, can I make one comment?
Sure.
If this is advisory and not mandated, then we run the issue of not having teeth in this. If it's mandated, then we're automatically adding four to six weeks for every building permit that comes through town. And that's a, a time and money issue. So I think you need to look at it in that context, whether it's going to be a, a service you offer to your residents to, to vet their projects voluntarily, or if you're going to mandate it. And if you mandate it, we're automatically extending the processing time, which gives us teeth and gives us legal retort if they don't agree with what goes on. But it, it will have an impact in, in a major way. And the other, the one other comment I would make about it is that if it's, if the concern is aesthetic, but the solution is in tweaking the code to address a particular problem that is perceived like a thirty-six inch, a thirty-six-foot parapet wall or something of that nature, maybe that's a different direction that that board could look at in terms of suggestions into the process. That the concern is that somehow staff is interpreting code, and we're interpreting it to show that a property fits within the code, but that doesn't necessarily parallelly match with the aesthetic of what the town might want to see. So I think this has to either be mandated, if that's where you want to go, or it has to be advisory, in which case you, you'll still have the issue, you'll still have the problem of whether our interpretation is professional staff members meets what the code says. But I think that, that determination... But I think that determination of, is this a required stop on the way to getting a permit, is that the case or not? Because that's the bottom line here. It's either required, as in the shell or should, or it's not, in which case, we will be litigated against if it's not required, because it will be perceived as somebody's interpretive aesthetic. Just some food for thought here, into how we process this.
Very quickly, I agree with our town manager, and would suggest that it should be required, period, number one. Number two, let's all keep in mind, we're not pioneering with this kind of procedure. It's been proven to be reasonably effective up and down the coast, but we're not going all the way. We're taking a baby step. But I think it's a baby step in the right direction, as I mentioned before, and I think it may, it may help us so we don't have to be just lucky, and we can prevent some oddball stuff from happening here. And in all of this, again, I'll say, none of this is perfect. It's all nuanced, but my gut feeling tells me this is a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Ken Khalil, 86 Allen Drive South. I hope you've had a chance to read my letter. Did you read my letter? Take the opportunity to read my letter? Yes, no? I think I've.
This came, we already left.
Well, I was looking over there, I didn't see any. I think I've laid out some very salient points as to the issues involved, and I think it's more than what they're just, what the P&amp;Z is suggesting. I understand what they're trying to do. I understand that. But it's kinda funny that not one of them up there, not one of any of us have had to go through that process, yet somehow we like our town. And somehow, homeowners get through the process without you telling them how to do it. It's amazing, in that time period, that this has occurred. But all of a sudden, we wake up now and feel like some compulsion to do this without really defining what we're trying to achieve. If you can't tell me, under this proposed code, what I am allowed to do, and that's why I have the problem. I don't know what I'm allowed to do, and I don't like that. And I don't think any homeowner would like that. And if you were going through the process and selling your home and understanding how a buyer thinks about buying a property, they like to know with some reasonable assurance that they're gonna be able to do with their property what they want to do. And there is some reasonable assurance in some of these other municipalities of what you can do and what you can't do. And the ones that don't have that are the ones that get in trouble, and I respectfully disagree with your town attorney. You know, granted, certain things are enforceable. When it's totally subjective, totally subjective, and that's what this is, a total subjectivity as to the entire criteria, and to boot, there's a provision in there that gives them the power to override the code. Basically, looking at those issues and saying, well, no, we don't like that. That doesn't work. When your code allows it, that is a problem, and I think the town attorney would agree. That is a problem when otherwise you're allowed to build something within the community, when it's totally subjective. That's the issue. And it does have an impact. And if we were concerned about the economics, and if we were concerned about these other issues, as my memo points out, those are things that we have to think about. And I'm just, it, you know, it's amazing that we survived all this time, and to think that we won't survive in the future. And yes, when we built this town hall, it was condemned. The design was condemned at the time, and if we had a review board, I'm sorry, Mark, but that's the fact. Digby, and I supported Digby's out-there design, and your design. I supported it wholeheartedly. But I can tell you that my neighbors were not happy about it. They were not, I had to sell them on the concept. And we even had to have a special meeting to have, so he could explain the South African architecture and everything else. They were livid about it. It would've never been built.
But it's in context.
But regardless of that, you're still talking about a subjectivity, and you're still talking about the taste. And while I respect each and every one of the people on this P&amp;Z, and I truly do, because I know every one of you, and I know they have great judgment and good taste, I can guarantee there's gonna be people on there that don't, and that it's gonna be a fight. And I don't want to see that happen to our town. I've seen it. I've seen when neighbors come out, and then they hear about it, and then they all get upset, and then there's a fight within the neighborhood. I've seen that in communities throughout. And that's not something that this community has a history of, and it's not something that, I don't see an overwhelming problem. That, show me the problem, and let's find the solution. But you haven't shown me the problem. What's the issue? Tell me a house that wouldn't have been built. Harbor Island, Harbor Drive South is a prime example. I don't hear anybody, no one's clawing at, they were screaming at the time, right? Melnick's House. I mean, you name it, there are things that then, all of a sudden, blend into the neighborhood. Somehow, it works. As long as we have creative designers like Mark and other architects, they're gonna pu, A, push the envelope, right? They're gonna push the envelope. We're gonna get an architect from California that comes in here that says, oh, you know, we should be looking like Malibu now. You know, that happens, right? But you have economics involved, these are not cheap lots, people are not gonna throw their money away. I mean, this is something that, you do have that definition of the economics of this, that I believe. And let's take a look at Manalapan. I can see Manalapan really suffered by that, the igloo. Really, their property values have totally decimated, and people are up in arms. That didn't happen. And guess what? That happened a long time ago. Long time ago. So, I mean, I'm missing something. And if we do have the problem, and I appreciate Jamie talking about the interpretation, I'm very concerned if Manny's interpreting what we can do. We shouldn't be at that level. We should be defined. He shouldn't have that ability to interpret what can go on in the town. If we have a problem that he says, oh, Jesus, we have a problem here, and I don't know because of, there's an ambiguity, whatever, then we need to correct that. We need to fix that aspect, right? If the P&amp;Z, if you guys want to sit down and go through and take the effort to say, okay, this is the types of things that you'd like to see in town, let's publish it, so people have an understanding of what it is. And that will change over time. And if you put that notice out, that will naturally have some teeth and some gravity to it. It has gravity to the economics of the whole situation, right? If that's what you want to do. But just to blindly not have that understanding, you tell me, look at this code, and objectively, if you were coming in, could you say what you could build? No. Because unless you answer all those criteria, unless five people answer all those criteria, they can tell me what I can do. I can't. I have a problem with that. I really do. If you're gonna do this, we're gonna have to have some definition, and I know that's hard, and I know that's problematic, and that's why it can't be done. Thank you.
Terry?
Terry Brown, Harbor Drive South, Ocean Ridge. I won't take as long as Ken glared, although I agree with most of what he said. I'm gonna get back to.
Friends, are we friends?
To the flat roof. And I agree with Mark, on most issues, I agree with Mark, but I'm not his friend either. But the flat roof issue came about, Ken is mostly correct, because Digby Bridges was involved, but my neighbor who lived to the west of me was on this commission, George Stamos, if anyone remembers him, and I was so fortunate that I had Chris O'Hara living right across the street. So, you can imagine what tension we had there. George Stamos went bonkers when he saw this house go up at number 26, if anyone wants to go by there and look at it, a flat-roof house with one architectural feature in the front. So, there was a knee-jerk reaction to eliminate that possibility in the construction in this town. We already have all these other structures built. We have the Melnick houses, we have these houses at the south end, we have this house on Tropical, the McKinney House, which some people love, but I happen to hate. It's a concrete box that's covered in marble or something. And you have all these other structures on Hudson, are we there? And then you want to come up with a knee-jerk reaction to try to solve that problem. This town has an eclectic, independent streak in it, and you don't want to stifle that feeling of this town. You don't want to have a town like the town of Palm Beach where you gotta approve the color of the paint and the hedge heights and everything else. I mean, I just think that we don't need another knee-jerk reaction like we did with the flat roof.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mary Lemming, 2 Harbor Drive North. I'm gonna disagree with my good friend, Terry Brown. Actually, Ken asked if any examples, and I can think of one. There's a house directly to my east, which is essentially a house built on stilts. I don't know if a review board might have pointed out that, you know, this fits the couple very well, but nobody else is probably gonna want a house built on stilts because it's very small. And, you know, they got around it, of course. The people who built it were great friends. But it's now a sober home because they can't sell this house. So, I just don't know if a review process might help us a little bit to avoid construction that then isn't sellable and ends up being managed property that gets used for other purposes.
Thank you. Manny, anything to say? You're in the hot seat on that.
Well, other than the fact that that stilt house is not a stilt house, because there is an ordinance that prohibits stilt houses.
No, they got around it.
They did.
They put frangible walls in there.
Exactly. So, that construction did meet the required zoning restrictions and were allowed to.
Okay, other than that, what are your problems that you see that this particular type of ordinance may help you, even if there was, you know, like colors removed and things of that nature?
Well, I really don't, as far as interpretation of the code, I don't have an issue with that. After all, I did have 14 years of, to my resume, under Karen. So, my point that I'm making with that is that she was pretty well the person that guided the, what the intent or how the code should be looked at as far as construction plans that would be presented. I now see it, I do it on my own, but there are some times where there, interpretation of a specific project, an issue on a new construction home or something, that could go, could be read one way or the other, and that is where I have, I had the good fortune to be able to call on Mark Mars to give me some directions, okay, look, this could be either or. But the way that the code is spelled, I have sometimes an option, and I think that's what Mark was trying to say, that take that away from me, this, and then stick to just what's black and white. Sometimes the definitions of a certain particular project does have a little gray, and that's where I would probably, would mind having a little background.
Well, see, I think that's where I think. It is definition, but that's where I got a little sideway was with the whole thing, is that I didn't, my, when I foresaw, was looking into this, it was something more of a citizens' review committee, not so much for the people that are building the house, but the people who are living around the house that are gonna get built. Now, I'm not crazy about the notification and any of that stuff, but I just thought something that, mechanism where a plan comes in, and the citizens who are part of the town say, hey, you know, I'm just kinda curious, what's gonna happen with this particular wall next to this particular homeowner? And in those gray areas. Now, it wasn't any type of yes, no, you can't do this, you can't do that. It was just to review, to answer questions that would come out, especially like that one where you had the entranceway, the front door, which should be on Ocean, is on Tropical. And you have the, the way the front door sits, you walk up the stairs, so there's little questions like that that would come up, so that when your homeowner's asking, hey, how did that get approved? And you say, well, we have a review committee, the citizens reviewed it. And even though every single one of those criteria, the ordinances and the town codes have been taken into account, at some points of time, I can see that, I don't, what I'm trying to do is that I wouldn't mind having just a few folks that are sitting on a board that can say, hey, Manny, how are we gonna interpret this? Not make decisions on what you can or cannot do, but how are you going to interpret this so that it's not just a decision by people who work for the town, but people who actually live in the town? Not a decision, I should change that word, but it's more of a, the review, that to say, is this, again, the changing of modern architecture, which we've seen come and go, we've seen the Key West, and now we're in the modern, and we'll probably go back to the Key West at some point, and it goes all over the place here, and the remodels. But it's just, to me, was just an idea that the planning and zoning would have a chance to look at something to be able to determine, hey, what's going on here, and is, you know, is there something that adversely could affect the neighbors? And with you sitting on the board, if you, hey, this pertains to all the codes and ordinances, this is within the thing, so it's really, you can't deny it, but what about this one doorway? Or what about this way this parapet wall goes straight up, right up against this neighbor's house? It's just something that, not to give an okay or a denial on a paint color or a style of architecture, it was a place just to review it. Now, to make it mandatory, I think you'd have to make it mandatory for a review, it's citizens' review. Does it have any teeth? No. But at least it's something to where the town, the people of the town can see what's going on, rather than just the people who work in the town. That's, was my opinion of the whole thing.
I think that's, in principle, that sounds fine. I mean, it's elusive. The problem I have is that an owner comes with a final set of documents, he spends a lot of money, investment, and then finds out he has a problem. And that's, that's what.
Well, couldn't we do that prior to that? Why couldn't we do it as a.
That's what I think currently, that's what the problem is, that, you know, you get a final set of documents, ready for permit, and there are issues. At that stage, it's very difficult to revise or even make suggestions. What we're trying to do is just to, again, assist staff by whatever review, I don't, it doesn't have to have a fancy name, kind of similar to what you said, you know, that we are available to, and I think it has to be on each application, it can't just be on.
You can't pick and choose.
Pick and choose, that would be.
But it's point four. If you throw out everything in this ordinance, just go right to point four, concept, plan, review, which is a great idea. They have the option of bringing it to you. You want to make it mandatory? And you have the limited time period in which P&amp;Z reviews it and comes back.
As Jerry said, we're trying to baby step into this, to see, I agree with some of what Ken said, but I think the horizon doesn't look, you know, there's gonna be a lot more investment in town, there's gonna be, you know, people are coming with their own ideas, we have an open door or open season for anybody to do anything, and I just fear, because I see it in business.
So, Mark, would this language do you okay? The purpose of this process is to provide a potential developer with an informal, non-binding review and commentary by the Planning and Zoning Commission on his/her proposal without the necessity of meeting normal submission and procedural requirements? That's what you.
Well, there are only three of us left, I, it's a start. I'm just saying, you know.
But you guys came up with this, so it's.
Yeah, no, I mean, as Jamie said, you know, you have to have some teeth. We can try that concept approach, you know, and see if that works.
Ken Khalil again. If it's a, if it's a situation where Manny or whoever our building review person is, it requires an interpretation of some sort, then I probably would be in favor of passing it on to P&amp;Z for review, if it truly requires an interpretation. That's different than, so now you have a situation where he doesn't really know which way to go, and I kind of agree, I don't think we should leave, and that's kind of what I alluded to before, either fix the problem to avoid the interpretation, not that he couldn't do it, but it puts a lot of pressure. but it puts a lot of pressure on him or Karen beforehand. And it puts a lot of power in a very small person, in a.
Can we have a shrink from the record, please?
In a single person to make those decisions. And that I, I'm okay with. But, but otherwise, if, otherwise the house meets the code and there's no interpretative measure necessary, then I feel we don't need the review. But if at the end of the day, they submit a plan that requires, oh, jeez, I really, our code really doesn't, or something's of issue, and he says, you know what, maybe we need to have this reviewed. But I think that, that could be potentially, I could see a point where we could possibly design a code, an ordinance, that could tackle that particular issue. And if that's the problem, that's what I said before, tell me what the problem is and then let's deal with the, let's deal with the solution. If that's the problem, then I think we ought to discuss defining an ordinance that deals with that aspect. And therefore, I would be okay with it. If you want to go with a full, if it's a full house demolition, if it's a full house demolition with a developer coming in, I would probably also support something. I mean, I think there are different things, but once you said, this is what dragged me. And if you read my letter, you saw right at the outset. Once you defined it to be something, then that's the problem I started to have because there was no clear cut, no clear cut definition of what I could do.
See, that's, that's what I, that's what I was going through with this, is that to do it on every home that you're going to tear down and build a new one. Because would it not, could it be interpreted, though, that you're picking on somebody? If you just say, this one's up to interpretation, could they not come out and say, well, you didn't do it to the three previous?
But you're going to have that regardless of, anytime you go down the architectural review path, you're going to have the issue of comparison to, because that goes into the character of the neighborhood, that goes into those other definitions. And I've heard this at other towns that, you know, I've had to argue on behalf of property rights owners. Homeowners, not necessarily developers, homeowners.
But if I look at every one of them, though, you're bringing fair playing field to everybody.
I, I'd have to see that. I just have to see that. But if he has, if he has an issue with, like you defined, instead of going to Mark individually, again, you're transferring the power to a, although quite talented, what if he says, you know what, I'm going to go call Ken. I'm going to call Ken and let him tell me what the design should be. Now we're really talking, right? So, so do you see where the problem starts to occur? That's where the problem is. And so let's try to address that issue and, and give them the power to do something. I don't have a problem with that, but we've really got to be careful.
I see this as, is kind of a conceptual, that the architect or the homeowner or the builder would come before the P and Z with the concept that this is what we're planning to build on this. But once you get the architectural schematics and so on and so forth developed, to make changes at that point in time is going to be really cost prohibitive and you're going to get some arguments. And the, the other point is, I, I think if you just have this conceptual review, and I'm having trouble with how you would define that, but I think over a period of time, that the word would get out and it would be less problematic the further along that we have this process or are beginning of this process, the further along the road we go, the more, the easier it's going to be to have new residents or builders or whatnot that are coming into town to understand what we're trying to accomplish and keeping everything somewhat similar.
Yeah, I think, we're down to two here. I have to leave in two minutes, so. Yeah, I think Brian is our guide here. If we could lay out some conceptual, talk about this, it's actually schematic is the key word. That, that's the initial, you know, display or what your concept is. If we can leave it at that, I think we, I don't see a problem stopping this. And if, God forbid, we have an onslaught of, you know, things, we can step it up to a more advisory or whatever we want to call it.
So, so Mark, what would be, what problem, and the town attorney too, what problem do you think we would have if, instead of mandatory review by every application, we have a trigger event by the building official saying or certifying that there is a question as to whether or not this aspect of the construction meets the code, which would then trigger architectural review of that plan if there's a bona fide interpretation that, that he needs of the code? Instead of mandating everybody.
I think it's, I think conceptually, I think you need to mandate. You can't pick and choose. That would bring in all kinds of, you know.
See, I mean, the problem I'm having is that.
But if it, if it follows a criteria by where the town broadcasts to a developer, applicant, owner, whatever, that the town is now requiring a conceptual submission just to see the minimum criteria of what the intent is, then I think that's, I, it has to be all or none.
Polly?
Well, I agree with everything that Ken says. My concern also is, this board isn't the same five years from now. You know, we got these loosey-goosey subjective things. We're going to look at color, we're going to look at transition from the street, we're going to look at neighborhood. You know, it's just, I, I would resent the infringement on my individual property rights when I was going through the design process. I would find that real cumbersome. The other thing is, as we're getting more building permits, I would expect that the lead time to get a project through the building department is increasing. Then you add on the review of planning and zoning, whether you do it upfront, which is not a requirement, or through the process. They meet once a month. You could meet with them. They could say, we, we don't approve this. You've got to come back. You wait another month, you come back again. It's really, well, anybody who read my letter knows I'm not in favor. And so I just wanted to go on the record with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here's the problem I'm having. I agree with Ken. I mean, essentially having, if the issue is whether or not it's aesthetically nice and the, the construction meets all the criteria of the building code, you're having a non-elective body essentially overruling the building code and saying, even though it meets with code requirements, we're not going to allow that construction. It's a non-elective body essentially rewriting the code. That's the conceptual problem I have with, with this. And I, you know, they're here to help? Yeah, well, if Mark Marsh is knocking on my door saying, hi, I'm from the Ocean Ridge Architectural Board. I'm here to help. Yeah, okay, fine, no problem. But if it's, you know, Terry Brown is gone, but if it's a Terry Brown knocking on my door saying, I'm from the Architectural Review Board, I'm here to help. I mean, I don't know. And to the, to that point, you know, this board is going to be changing in a few years, perhaps, depending on your longevity. And it may be a completely unrealistic condo commander kind of board who is going to be dictating taste, so.
But I think we've already established the fact that the ordinance, we're not, I mean, to me, the ordinance is a little, it's not my direction originally when I thought about even starting this was where we were going. It was more this conceptual idea of having citizens review a plan. Because let's go back. We, you know, we had a Karen. She was the, that was it, this is what it's going to be. I would be, I'd come in here and Manny and her would be arguing about it. So the thing about it is, that's what we had. We had somebody here that was literally almost like on the side of the existing residence. So we didn't have that, we didn't have that luxury right now. So would we not have that luxury, just having a conceptual, have a board that literally sits, they review the schematics of the new house, and they see if there's anything wrong with it? Is there any conceptual things wrong with it? Manny, have you seen anything? No, this one looks good to me. How many times is it really going to come up that there's going to be a problem? There's no paint colors and that. I'll tell you, one thing that has put everybody over the edge is paint color. I mean, literally, that has thrown everybody into this tailspin like you can't believe. But we're not talking about that, in my case.
Ryan, what's wrong with having the, a building official saying there's a question of interpretation, triggering, you know, the Architectural Review Board stepping into the picture, as opposed to having everybody submit to the Architectural Review Board?
The reason is because, but on yours, to your argument is they would already have the blueprints, the schematics and so on and so forth completed. And to make changes at that point, it's going to be expensive and you're going to probably more than likely end up in a debate or an argument that is going to end up.
Well, but that's the whole point of the certification by the building official. There's a bona fide need for an interpretation of this part of the code. And I, I don't know the answer to the question, and so I should have the Architectural Review Board take a look at this.
Well, I, I don't think we would term it that way. Because the, you know, I get what you're saying. I think what it could be, you know, possibly, we could look at it is whether or not, you know, if the zoning official, the zoning official has a question regarding, you know, the, the land development code. And the zoning official, official is seeking input from the Planning and Zoning Board on this question. The zoning official will still be the one sole decision maker, nobody else. However, the zoning official can take input from the P and Z board regarding, you know, plans submitted and do it that way. Now, you know, as far as if we would do that for every one, that would be okay. Now, if we're talking about just doing it for certain ones that, that Manny may have a question on, then that's where the real, that's where the issue's going to come in because people know that this is going to add, it's not really going to add costs to it because we probably won't advertise that it's going to add. I mean, it'll be on the agenda, but we won't send out individual notice, but.
So then you have essentially the Architectural Review Board, everything is mandatory. Not mandatory, but everything gets submitted to the Architectural Review Board. Then Manny certifies there's a problem. I need an interpretation of this. So it's, it's a point, it's just a, where in the process he steps in with that certification?
I think it'd have to be at the very beginning.
Exactly. My point is, you know, it, it's not automatically something unless there's an interpretive issue of the code. Because then I think that gets around the problem of the, the, the non-elective board rewriting our code.
Well, yeah, the, the problem that I, I see with that, though, is, is that, you know, the code,
you know, there, there are certain sections of the code and there are certain, you know, when plans are submitted, there is no way that we can always write a code that is going to completely take away any interpretation that Manny may have. There will always be something there, well, we hadn't thought of that, and now here's what they're proposing. How do we treat that? Okay, do we, do we wait for, you know, do we just hold off for those particular instances? Or, you know, because in some cases, you know, Manny, you know, somebody may submit a plan that shows, okay, there's 36-foot-high blank walls on two public rights of way. However, for some strange reason, that's allowed by the code. Okay, chances are people are going to be complaining about that. But Manny said, look, it met the code, there was no interpretation needed. I didn't need to take it to them. You know, to have their input on it, where their input could have been to the developer or to the architect, like, look, have you thought about doing X, Y, and Z or something else on here? You know, and so that's the issue that we get in. I certainly understand where you're coming from. I just don't know how we can have, you know, how we can leave it up because once again, that's going to be Manny's decision on, okay, well, let me take it to, let me take it to them now. Or, no, I don't need to take it to them. When, where do you make that, you know, where do you make that cutoff? And I don't know how you can do that, to be honest with you. That's the problem I've got.
Okay, so, right regarding this ordinance, I think we, at this point, we pretty much know that the ordinance itself, as written, is not going to fly.
And, and I think, just so everyone knows in the public too, we will be bringing this back to you at your next meeting where I imagine you may vote it down. But it will need to come back to you in this, you know, in this form, if you don't mind. And then we can, you know, I guess depending on what direction you give me now or whatever, we can go forward with another ordinance or something.
Well, I think we should look into the conceptual plan review. I think, I really do not see how that could be construed as anything, but. Helpful. I really don't. I mean, you're not talking about pink colors or anything of that nature. Go ahead.
People today come into the town of Ocean Ridge, they buy a million and a half dollar property, they knock down the house and they put in a three million or four million, whatever it is. Every property owner that comes in that wants to build has a concept of what they want to build. All right? Now, if it, if it doesn't meet code, we're not going to allow them to build it. But the perfect example is this structure that's at Hudson in A1A. There's nothing wrong with, this is, this is the concept that these people were willing to pay their money for. It does not violate the code. The thing you have to understand is the codes change every three years. They don't get looser, they get tighter. And every day, there is new technology, new methodology on how to build and, and put things together for you to, to set a threshold, if you will, or create some type of milestones in order to meet some final goal.
I don't see, that's not, but that's not what we're doing, though.
Fresh minds mean fresh ideas. If you don't like what they're going to build, P and Z is going to say, no, you can't do this. This doesn't fit in. Well, it's, that's arbitrary, very subjective.
Here's another, we talked about all day, all morning. We talked about roofs, we talked about, what else we talked about in this thing, all this stuff. Now, if there's, say you have a conceptual review, which is the review, the committee we have now, planning and zoning. During all these reviews or doing these homes, you're thinking, hey, you know, this is something we may talk about changing in our code because this is really not working. And even though it is in the code at that point, these are things that, that the code can be actually thought about and it's the same people, looking at the same, most of the same people over, first way, years after year after year. A lot of people stay on that commission. So as the, their knowledge grows of looking at each one of these homes going in Ocean Ridge, even though they're to the ordinance, to all the codes, and they can be built, they could see ways to actually improve on the code. You know, it's just another way of taking examples of, you know, that's really after his bill. You know, that really didn't work that particular way. And maybe Manny was right, or it's just, what's wrong with more information? And you're not, you're not telling people what they can or cannot do. You're just, the review is with the.
Nothing's wrong, Mr. Mayor, with.
And with the town commission.
With more information. However, there are things wrong when you infringe upon property owners' rights.
I agree with that.
Their, their ability to have what they conceive as their dream home.
Let me read some. The purpose of this process is to provide a potential developer with an informal, non-binding review and commentary by the Planning and Zoning Commission. What is wrong with that?
In respect to their new property owner, their handy drawing plans and stuff, before they do that, sometimes I get a call, we have a preliminary meeting, maybe we can incorporate that preliminary meeting with P and Z.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, too.
There you go. Let me ask a question. I don't know who would be able to answer this, or maybe, maybe it'd have to be answered before next meeting. Do you guys have time to do this? Like, how many home plans are coming through the system at any given month, let's say? Is it like two? Is it like 10? Is it? Three a month? So is it maybe six all year? Is it? Okay, so it's 10.
Even if it's 12, it's one a month.
Yeah.
So anyway, so you want to go ahead and, well, we know we're doing it at the next, well, we can't all vote right now, but at the next meeting, we bring up the ordinance again. Doesn't look like that's going to fly. And then we should start discussing, you know, some other type of, I think this, the way this number four is written so far, doesn't, it looks something on the path that may be the way to go. Have you, are you aware what you're talking about?
I have.
On the conceptual plan review?
The, on the memorandum, you still got the 250 and that's.
That, that will go by the wayside. I mean, we will not be right. Because this is, this is just a, just a review with no T exactly in it. And, I mean, the only notice now. in it, and, I mean, the only notice, now, I guess, just so you, I guess, you know, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, the only notice that will go out, it'll be on an agenda, the P and Z agenda, but we will probably not be sending out individual notices to neighbors or anything like that. It'll be up to the neighbors to see, okay, what's on the P and Z agenda, is it a house near me, where they can, you know, if they want to show up at the meeting, it's a public meeting, they can do that. I guess the other question is, I mean, is there, I don't know if there's any direction on making this mandatory for all, complete, and I guess I'm just talking about now, just new construction, no, no partial construction, just new construction.
Why don't we do this, why don't we send it to those, the planning and zoning, and they can go through, they can hash all of that out?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to fee schedule.
Mayor, you may want to defer this one because of the discussion today, because this is in relationship to what fees we would, we would schedule for this process. So you may want to just defer that to a later meeting.
See you later, Ken.
Well, I heard the word fee, so.
All right, so was there, no discussion on fee schedule? All right, hearing none?
I moved to refer, defer that, how's that?
That's right, good deal. All right, so anything else? Hearing nothing? Thank you, everyone. All productive work, John.